Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 1st, 2023 regular session meeting of the Board of Public Utilities Board of Directors. I'd like to welcome everybody who's here in person viewing online, listening online. It's a reminder, everything is being recorded via audio and video. As always, there's a public comment section. If you're in the room, please sign up over here at the Executive Assistance Desk. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Each member of the public wishing to speak, please provide your name and address. And direct your comments at the board only. You have a maximum of five minutes to speak. It's a reminder that all comments are made public. We caution any visitor to not disclose any confidential account information. Please don't disclose any account information about an account that is not yours. Staff can provide or cannot provide, excuse me, individual account information or history in an open meeting for confidentiality reasons. Members of the public may also call or email BPU with questions or concerns. Tonight's agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, Board Meetings tab. If you're using Zoom, they'll be on your screen. Reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. Following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully toward each other. That does apply to folks participating online as well. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue or question to the board only. Attendees shall refrain from side discussions. Individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussions are necessary, we would ask that you please take them outside of the boardroom. Introductions. I am Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Three, and I'm the current Board President. Other members of our staff and board include Bill Johnson, General Manager, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Tom Groneman, Second District, and current Board Vice President, Bob Mylan, First District, and current Board Secretary, Jeff Bryant, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, and Angela Lawson, Acting Chief Counsel. Would remind everyone to please put your phones on silent. Microphones in the room or throughout the room, they're very sensitive. They can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I'd ask that you rise and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. Angela, may I get a roll call, please?
Roll call. Mylan? Mylan? Oh, come back. Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
Mylan? Is he shown? You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session for October 18th, 2023, I'd ask if there are any corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
I move to approve the work session minutes of October 18th.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session for October 18th, 2023 has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 18th, 2023, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of October 18th, 2023 has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Haley, is there anyone listed to speak tonight? Thank you. Rob, is there anyone online that wishes to speak tonight? Nobody? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on into General Manager Staff Reports. First, I'll ask Lori Austin to come up and give us our 2023 third quarter financials.
Good evening.
Evening.
We'll go over the results of the third quarter for 2023. First slide, taking a look at our electric usage through September. So we're down in comparison to 2022 levels by about two and a half percent. That's about the same level we were at in August. Residential is below 22 as well as our industrial. We are seeing a little bit increase in our commercial being up about 1%. On the water side, water's up slightly by about 1.8% above 2022. Residential's up slightly, 2%. Commercial being up 4% and industrial being down 2%. This is also similar to our August levels. Looking at our revenues for the third quarter. Overall, in comparison to 2022, we're down about 2.4%. In comparison to budget, we're up about 5%. The electric side is up 5%, while water is up 8%. Looking at year-to-date revenues, we're up almost 3% above 22 levels while we're up 4.6% against our budget. Electric is up about 5% while water is up 4%. Some of the breakdown of the customer classes there, so we're seeing residential up about 3.8 million and commercials up 10.3 million. Our industrial is still down about 530,000. Schools are up about 870,000. And then our wholesale on the electric side, which is our sales to SPP are down about 4.6 million. Water's up about 4%. Residential's about 680,000. Commerce about 870,000. Industrial's up about 215,000. Our wholesale there is up about 140,000. Looking at our operating expenses just for the third quarter. So our expenses are down in comparison to 2022 by about 15.7%. From our budget, we're up about 1.3%. The electric is showing up over budget by about 3% while water is showing a drop in their expenses by about 10%. Looking at our expenses from year-to-date, pretty much in line with 2022, up slightly, almost 1%. We are 2.6% above our budget. We do see electric up about 4% while water is down about 7%. Just looking at the graph there, so our fuel and purchase power represents about 41% of that budget. And then transmission, distribution, and production is about 43% of that budget. And just to note, I think at the end of June, we did recover the full, or recognize the full 14.8 million of the under recovery of the ERC. Looking at operating expenses, less depreciation, down slightly or very little by about a half percent in comparison to 22, up about 2.7% against budget. Purchase power is up about 1.6 million while our fuel is down pretty good amount, about 5.6 million. Production's up 3.4 million while TND's down 2.8 and GNA's down 1.6. On the water side, all their expense categories are down below budget. About 950,000 on production, 470 on TND, and about 300,000 on GNA. Our change in net position for the third quarter, we're showing a positive 30.5, almost 30.5 million positive combined. It's up over 2022. It was about 19 and a half million. Compared to our budget, we are at 25 and projected to be at 25 and a half million. So we're seeing electric up above budget, a little less than 3 million, and waters up above by about 2 million. Looking at our year-to-date change in net position, so we're at a positive 35.8 million year-to-date. Last year at this time, we're about 27 and a half million. Our budget was projected to be about 28.4 million. Do see electric up about 3.2 above budget and waters up about 4.2 million above their budget. So overall, about 7 million above budget. Looking at our financial trend, pretty consistent, the level between the expenses and revenue. So we're 252.6 million overall in revenue year-to-date with 225.6 million in operating and non-operating expenses on the electric side. And then on the water side, about 40.41.7 million in revenue with operating, non-operating expenses, about 33 and a half million. Looking at our average daily collections, so we were collecting close to 2.1 million a day, so kind of in line with where we were last year at this time. The, what we're collecting now is usage from July, that's built in August, and we're collecting it for September, so. We figure that the average will be similar to that probably through October and maybe a part of November, just due to the warmer weather that we've experienced. Next slide looks at our monthly cash comparison, so we had a positive 6.2 million in September. Some of the things identified in that are to remain positive. So we've collected all but a million and a half of our under collection of the ERC. So that's going into, I think, the first quarter of 2024. We, one other thing that we did get reimbursement back on, so we're self-insured, and so we've had a few higher claims, health claims that have come out, and our third party has reimbursed us for that, so our stop-loss insurance, so that money came back in. Very important having the plant in the market because that's created a positive cash flow for us. And then we've had some sales of our racks from our renewable energy that we've been able to sell, and that price has gotten a little bit better, so. And then the last item is we had a contract to sell a little bit of our unused capacity during the summer period, and so that revenue has been coming in as well, so. Good news there. So our cash position, we're at 82 days in August versus we're at 96 days in September. There was a significant amount, we look at a 12-month rolling average of our expenses and everything, and so there was a significant amount in September of 2022 that dropped off. So I've kind of adjusted the average day down to about 600 to 625. We were averaging around 625 to 635 previously, so now we're about 620 to 625, so adjusted that. Next slide is our graph. Just looking at our historical. Had a good couple months, so hopefully we can, you know, maintain and stay into that level. It is important because the winter months typically we're getting ready to come into our shoulder months out of the summer, and then our winter, which is not as strong as our summer period, so being able to maintain that level will be important. Next slide just is a different look, just representing that our days of cash on hand went up in comparison to with our change in our cash. The balance sheet, some notables there. Fuel inventory. We're at about almost 6 million in fuel inventory, which is pretty comparable to 2022 levels. We still have our two bond issues that are out there. Hoping to get a few more transformers in before the end of the year, and we could take care of the 2016 bond issue. So hopefully both of those will be reimbursed back to us by the end of the year. On our capital spending. So we have a budget, a capital budget of about almost 61 million. We've spent so far to date about 32 and a half million. Some of the electric has spent about 19 of that, water's almost 11 million, and then common, which is mostly IT, about 2.6 million of that, so some of our major projects there. The Fisher Underground Feeders continue to have a little bit more money each month, 2.6 million. Then our annual underground and overhead, 1.4, 1.2 million are just our continuous projects that come in for development. The pole inspection, we spent about a million. IT's been working on their meter data management upgrades, that's about 500,000. And then the water's system improvement valves and leaks is about 2.1 million. And then they spend about 5.2 million on the Argentine tank replacement. Looking at our debt coverage. Top graph with pilot, so we're at a combined of 3.04, 3.05 with electric being 2.96, water being 2.29. Looking at our debt coverage without pilot is a combined of 2.31 with electric being 2.23 and water being 1.81. First time I've been here where we've had debt coverage in the threes. Any questions?
So I don't know if this would be for you, Lori, or for Bill, but the revenue numbers that we're seeing now, are we feeling more confident that 2024 will see us return to the maintenance and capital work levels that we had pre-COVID?
See us return to what level, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Like, pre-COVID, you know, during COVID, when, actually, I guess it's been the last year and a half, 18 to 24 months, that costs have gone so high, we've had to curtail some of the level of maintenance that we were doing in the past. And I'm wondering, you know, are we going to see, 2024 going to see us get back to, you know, the improvements, you know, on the level that we were before?
Well, so to answer, excuse me, the answer to that, I think what you saw in the work session is our revenue projection is going to come in close to what it used to be. Now, I'm still a little bit concerned about some of the supply chain inflationary numbers that's out there. I'm not certain if there's not some manufacturers, vendors taking advantage of of higher prices and keeping prices higher, because, you know, a lot of us are trying to figure out, okay, if things are returning normal, why aren't these prices coming down? And some of the lead time for some of the materials too, so. So, you know, we're taking a cautious approach. I think I think we'll be slowly going back to normal, Jeff. I think if we can get to where we're reinvesting in our infrastructure, I mean, that's what I want to see. I think that's what the board wants to see. I mean, because I know our capital spending keeps coming up. But I'll also remind you that, you know, a lot of that capital spending is funded by cash. Our cash position always has to be strong because we certainly don't have the revenue bonds, we don't have the loans always out there to protect us and to get us where we need to go, so. So we're being a little bit cautious, but yes, I think we're headed back in the right direction.
Okay. Yeah, I just know that, you know, water leaks have trended, you know, in a direction we don't want to see, and and same way with, you know, outages, even if they're momentary glitches and stuff, we're just, we're just seeing that lax and it, you know, I understand, and I applaud staff for pulling back on spending during the time that we didn't have, you know, the cash to do it, but I'm hoping to see our cash, you know, looking better in 24 so that we can get back to some of that maintenance level that we were at before.
And I've shared with the board some of our performance numbers, and, I mean, we're doing okay there. You know, thank God, we're not having any major equipment failures and things like that, but but, you know, we do have to get back to maintaining our infrastructure, otherwise things will catch up with us. That's part of our plan.
All right, thank you.
You want a motion to approve?
Yes.
This is Jeff. Move to approve as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mylan? I believe he's on the line. I'll come back. Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Mylan? If you could hit star six to unmute?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll call the vote again on the financials. Mylan?
Aye.
Right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, board. Next, speaking about infrastructure, speaking about budget, I'll ask come up to talk, yes, please. Phillip, I'm sorry, I had to remember what we just talked about, so Phillip Brown is coming up to give an update on our some of the federal dollars that we received and kind of where those dollars are going in terms of supporting our infrastructure improvements.
And while he's doing that, and I just asked Mr. Camp to switch, just switches over so I can control it. While that's happening, I did want to just acknowledge all the, well, first, thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you, board. And Jeremy and Chris, I wanted to acknowledge some of our staff we have here from Water, as we, oh, he's so fast. I did want to acknowledge some of our staff we have here from Water, so Chris allowed me to speak to you guys today. But we also have Brandon Sisk, who's one of our project engineers, and then we also have Aaron Moore. And the reason I like to point that out is here at BPU, you know, we really are concerned about our neighborhoods. Oh, sorry. And one of the huge advantages of that is these two young men, I like to consider myself in that group too. We are all graduates of Sumner Academy here in Kansas City, Kansas, and I really love to see that, you know, especially when you talk about summer internships and other things. BPU is not only investing in those learning opportunities, but we're also recruiting here in our own communities. But also, we also leave home, we go off to college, but then we come back with that knowledge to improve our community, so. I just want to say thank you to those guys that came.
Let me introduce Aaron while you're there before you get into the presentation.
Oh, yeah. So Aaron, can you please say, Aaron Moore graduated from Sumner, he also went to K-State. He does a lot of work, whether it's with Capital Alpha Psi or the National Society of Black Engineers in our community, and he's just all-around a great guy. I didn't know if there's anything else I should say. Yeah, and then, hey, thank you, Aaron. He just got hired, just how many months ago? Two months, so just two months, he's in our engineering group. Brandon's been here a lot longer, you heard him present, I appreciate him too. All right, so let's get started. How is BPU Water using our federal opportunities to improve the water system? So that's what we're going to talk about. I should have tested this. All right, so if there's nothing you don't get out of any of these presentations, I feel like we look at a lot of numbers throughout the day. So here's the summary, I did that for you first, so that way you don't have to worry about, you don't have to pay attention, yeah, please pay attention to everything else, but this is it. First, we received a $10 million grant, all right, so we're talking about cash position, and we're talking about a lot of things, and these are the opportunities that are really going to help us to improve that. $10 million grants from the EPA to replace aging water mains, our aged water mains. And then we also received a $3.7 million grant from the FEMA for disaster preparedness. Let me jump back to this EPA grant. So one of the big things about this grant is even though we receive that $10 million of progressionally directed spending earmarks, there's a component of it that the EPA only provides 80%, 80% of the dollars. So they say, hey, here's $10 million, $10 million, but that's only 80% of your total cost. In order to get that, BPU would have had, should have put for 20% of the remaining dollars to get to 10 million. However, because environmental justice 40, which was signed in by President Biden, that 40% of all the dollars in certain federal investments should impact underserved, marginalized, historically disadvantaged communities. Our community here, BPU, we are able to get a cost share waiver for that, so we didn't have to put up the additional $2.5 million for that. That $2 million, we're estimating that project is going to be completed at the end of 2025. The FEMA grant, which is for generators, we're estimating that's going to be completed at the end of 2026. So these are multi-year capital projects, but that's the summary, and here we go. Aged water mains. Now, some of these slides may look a little similar. We did a similar project to this back in 2014. The areas that we are concentrating on are east of I-635. We split up that section of Wanda County to 18 major areas, just so we could kind of coordinate the work. And then we also prioritize the work based on how bad these water mains are. And then we concentrate on water mains with leaks per mile greater than two. And based on that math, there's about 10 miles that we're going to do with this $10 million that are four inches smaller. So the EPA grant, like I said, I have to put this text in here because I like to do some legal lease, that's why I call it Congress Appropriate Resources for certain named community waterfront infrastructure projects. These are congressionally directed spending. I just call them earmarks, that's not really what they're called, but this is the actual name, congressionally directed spending. The primary locations we're looking at is the alphabet soup, but it's P, Q, R, A, B, D, and F. On my next slide, we're going to actually get into where those areas are. So this slide, we first presented to some of the board members who were here in 2014. The areas that are in a hash mark is what we did with our previous dollar. So back in 2014, we went to the Kansas Department of Health, and we have a SRF loan, and that's how we finance and pay for these improvements. Back then, we did C, E, G, H, I, and you'll see some more letters on the next slide. So this time around, we're coming back, we're getting A, B, D, and F, so we're going to be up there in that northeast corner. And then south of I-70, like I said, we already did M and Q. All right, yeah, M and Q. So now we're going to be focusing on R, P, not N, no, not N, just R and P for down here. Eventually, in the future, when we get more dollars, we're going to get some more of those areas. So how bad is it? Oh, sorry, yes, sir.
I was trying to keep up with the alphabet, thanks. It seems like, though, if J is not included, does J just have a low volume there?
Yeah.
No, if I missed it, you didn't.
No, you're absolutely right. So when we focus on the break rate of two, greater than two, J does have some of those. It's just not as many as some of these other areas, so we're trying to get the most bang for our buck. And by concentrating densely in areas where there's a lot of water mains to replace, our contractor is able to go to that one area and hit a lot of streets without driving around all the way. Yeah, no problem. And that was a great question. So how bad are these areas? So when we just look at four inch and smaller and looking at area P. and looking at area P, uh, we have over a hundred and fifty seven leaks, Q one forty five, R two hundred. And I just put A, B, D, and F together, that's that northeast section, um, that's a hundred and sixty three right there. When we start dividing out by the number of mouths per year. And this is a weird metric. It's kind of, in my opinion, it's kind of hard to understand, but I think you guys got it. You guys see us talk about leaks per um, year, leaks per mile quite a bit. So area P, for instance, is three point nine, Q is three point two, R is two point five, A, B, D, and F, two point one. Please bear in mind that the, our goal is zero point three. We want to get that number way down there. Uh, three point nine, that's over ten times what we really should be at, right? It's not great. But these are areas that could really benefit. So if I tried to give this as an example, um, three point nine means like in the mouth of pipe, almost four times a year, you'll see a BPU crew there digging up a hole, which is, that's just way too much. Our goal is only to be there once every three years or something like that. Less is better. So what happened after we did that first loan? So again, the first time we did this back in twenty fourteen, we went out for a loan, um, we're still paying for that loan, but uh, we saw some massive improvements, absolutely beautiful. So that four inch and smaller main breaks, that was thirty three percent of all of our total breaks in twenty fourteen. When we finished that project, as you can see in twenty twenty three, it dropped down to about twenty six percent. Um, based on this, we anticipated a reduction of about seventy breaks per year for those four inches. So that's seventy times, seventy fewer holes in the city that we're going to dig. Seventy fewer times that you may get a phone call in the middle of the night. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that's actually what we saw in that reduction. And before, this is the old slide now, before COVID, we were estimating that we were saving about two hundred thousand dollars per year. And again, because this is a capital project, that means these savings can actually be extrapolated over decades. We like to say our water mains last sixty, seventy, but of course, we're shooting it for a hundred years. Two hundred thousand dollars a year, multiply that by a hundred, or even let's just do ten years, that's two million dollars for ten years. Right? So over that a hundred years, you're up to twenty million dollars in savings. And that's the kind of things we like to see, right? Uh, we really like to see our dollars making sense. Of course, it also improves our fire protection. Um, a lot of these neighborhoods don't have the amount of water capacity to actually put out a fire. So now when we go back through these neighborhoods and we're putting in larger mains, we're actually able to improve our fire protection. This slide shows the exact same thing. It's just a graph showing that twenty fourteen through uh, twenty seventeen, you can see that steep drop in our number of breaks. And that's really because we was replacing the water mains as we get better. And now you can see twenty twenty three kind of flatline because COVID, we wasn't replacing this many, and now we're finally hoping twenty twenty four to really get back on top of that. I always have to paint a dire picture because water, even though we're spending ten million dollars, it is still a drop in the bucket. Alright, so uh, this is what this slide is trying to say. So let's take all these areas that we're going to focus on. And let's pretend we actually wanted to hit our goal today of doing zero point three. Any water main that is more than zero point three, how many dollars would we have to spend to go out there and do that today? That's fifty one million dollars. If someone gave me a check for fifty one million dollars, I already know where we need to go to actually put those dollars to use. And all these water mains will actually meet that criteria because they do need to be replaced. I'm not going to get fifty one million dollars. I would struggle to actually do that amount of work. But please try, I'm willing. Um, but we could also go now, if we tried to do at um, one break, that's twenty four million, one point five breaks, seventeen million. And here's our magic number, two breaks, right around ten million dollars. Again, our goal is zero point three, but that's how we kind of came up with the two. So where are these areas? These are just some larger zoomed in areas. I'm actually almost done here. Um, I did want to point out area R, area R is over by KU Hospital. This is in the southeast part of town. Area Q, this is in between Eighteenth Street and six thirty five, that's a county line there on the south. And we go north up to uh, Gibbs Road. Area P, this is north of Gibbs Road up to Metropolitan. It's still in between that Eighteenth Street and six thirty five. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have actually said this. Uh, the colors of the lines, the blue lines are just our water mains. And it's kind of hard to see, but they're a, a different color. Uh, I don't know what color that is. Is that orange? It looks like orange. Yeah. Uh, those orange lines are the ones we're actually saying that need to be replaced. I apologize, I should have said that. So um, A, B, D, and F. Alright, so this is the northeast part of town. You can see Fairfax in the far top, top corner. Um, so we see they're kind of small, but it's a larger area, but there's a number of water mains that do also meet this criteria that we're going to be replacing. And uh, oh, before, I'm about to jump over to our generator. Are there any thoughts about the aged water mains? Yes, sir.
So thank you very much for that. So the replacement, I mean, you talked about that once they're in, you think a shelf life would reasonably be how many years?
Our goal is always to hit a hundred years. That's really what we would love to see for our water mains. Um, typically it's probably sixty, seventy, but we always say our design life is a hundred. And that also gets us close to one of our other goals, which is a one percent replacement. If we hit a one percent replacement, that means we're hitting that design life of one hundred years.
Right, uh, now, is there any, they used to talk about, you know, especially in the older parts of town, our hundred year old system. Are there still, are those orange lines indicative of where we may have, not clay, but um, some sort of um,
Yeah.
inferior um, uh, lines that were laying long ago?
Yeah, these are typically a lot of our older areas. Typically is the galvanized pipe that we see that needs to be replaced. Now, there are some water mains that were stalled in the eighteen eighties. Um, they were typically made with cast iron, really heavy thick cast iron, which is in great condition. Some of those mains are better, like including the one right in front of this building. It was actually installed in eighteen hundreds. But a lot of what we see is typically after wars, especially World War One, World War Two, when there's shortages of metal. That's exactly when we start seeing that problem. So um, oh, I didn't have it in here. Let me try to go back to this one. Uh, it's kind of hard to see, but on this one, letter O in particular, this is going to be our face three. Letter O is the Highland Crest area. A lot of this was populated shortly after World War Two. It was sprung up practically overnight because there was also a flood, and we put in a lot of water mains really fast. They put a galvanized pipe. It is a horrible area for our water mains, absolutely horrible. We have water mains there breaks all the time. I've seen instances where they closed the valve because they fixed one break, caused another break, and they're still there a whole nother day. Uh, but those are the type of areas that we tend to see. Now, um, sorry, going back to A, B, D, and F, we typically see is our galvanized water mains. These are inch and a half galvanized mains. And you'll see them, if we ever show a picture, they have a lot of tuberculosis on the inside. They're just completely clogged, but those are those.
Tuberculosis is
Oh, yeah.
Like a calcification or some sort, something along that line.
Yes, sir.
Is that residual um, harmful in any way or?
No, so typically in our water treatment process, we use a lot of ortho phosphate as we uh, treat, uh, it causes scaling to build up over time. And then as that corrosion happens, but no, it is nothing to be concerned about there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. But no, those are excellent questions. When we go to schools, and especially when we send our engineers to schools, also, um, a lot of kids are always curious about what's in my water and how does our water fountain works and stuff, and they see pictures of different things. Alright, so here we go. Um, the last, last two slides and is all about our near water treatment switchgear and generator. So the FEMA grant was a hazard mitigation assistant fund, which we was awarded September twenty seven, twenty twenty three. This is where two two point five megawatt generators that are going to be diesel powered to be placed out at our water treatment plant. Current project schedule, this is kind of far out there. Um, that's November twenty third. We're on, I'd be advertising, not November twenty third, I'm sorry, November twenty twenty three, we're going to be advertising. It's a long lead item, so in September, we're planning to actually start um, awarding the installation contract with the goal of them working through that um, in twenty, the end of twenty twenty four. Anyway, all the way up to twenty twenty six to get ready for delivery of the equipment. The generator lead time is a hundred and eight weeks, um, fifty two weeks in a year, so it's over two years. And then when we're going to finish our construction in December twenty twenty six. This is a huge project. It's something that we always kind of needed. Uh, granted, we have a lot of redundancy built in in other places with our near power plant and doing other things, but this was another piece that really if um, certain rare cases that should never happen, if they ever did happen, this would be a critical component. With that, oh, I forgot to show a picture. So this is our water treatment plant. If you haven't had a tour there, I advise you to go. It's a great place to visit. Um, those are, those are our basins, so it's going to be right there at the water treatment plant where those two white squares are in the middle of your screen. With that, I am actually done. If you have any questions, uh, this will be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. So I thought it was important, uh, to bring this topic back to the board, you know, just as a reminder that uh, that, you know, different than some of the other federal funding that's been out there in the past and us working with the cure office and some of, some of the other things like that, that we are still actively pursuing and have limited some federal grants to come in to help the utility maintain a system, rebuild a system, and uh, and these dollars do serve uh, in a way of helping the community, you know, not direct payments for your bills. But it does also provide a lot of financial relief on our, you know, take that away from our taxpayers and having BPU having to pay for all these improvements all by ourselves. So we're continuing to look for things like that. Uh, we'll be talking more about, about some of that, but I I do, I do, I do think it's, it's good for us to come back and timely for us to come back and and talk about, you know, some of the efforts we have going on and how we're seeking out federal dollars for the benefit, but not just the utility, but for commu- community as a whole. The other thing I want to just say kudos to is to, is to both engineering groups. I know water, water was on board here today talking about projects. And uh, I will say that our engineering departments do do a very good job of of engineering planning, system planning over time and uh, looking out, analyzing where we are and uh, and building short term and long term plans. And uh, sometimes I'm amazed at that kind of where they are and uh, and the, the uh, the things that they're working on that make, go into future budgets, identify problems before they happen and come up with a, a way of addressing those, those things that need to still be taken care of, long term, short term and long term, so. I'll move on to Darren. I think you're next. Uh, so this is, Darren's going to talk about our twenty, twenty twenty three summer internship program at the service center.
I just want to start off and say I agree with Bill's recent comments. Engineers are great. We need more of them at BPU, as many as we can get.
Where are you getting more?
So, and that's what I want to talk about, our, our engineering internship program a little bit tonight. We've been doing for, for several years, electric operations. Um, just to give you a quick overview of the program, uh, what we're trying to achieve with it, um, some kind of recent changes, enhancements we've made. A little bit about our twenty twenty three internship, like Bill mentioned, and then some, some previous interns. Um, so what we're trying to do is um, expose, you know, our students to BPU and the public power industry. Um, you know, one thing in my opinion, we struggle with here. There are a lot of opportunities for engineers in, in Kansas City. Um, you know, several of the largest engineering firms in the country are headquartered here. Um, you know, we're relatively small company, you know, if you, if you want to get in the utility industry, obviously, average is all around us, so we have a hard time, I think. Getting BPU out there and letting people know about us and, and the kind of opportunities we have. Um, you know, and I think we also have a really good, really unique experience you can get here, so that's what we want to show these students. Um, and generally, we're trying to give students who um, want to go into utility industries, a really valuable experience. Um, you know, I've done consulting and obviously done a lot of utility work. Um, and, and there's a lot of things you can learn at utility. You just can't learn in consulting, a lot of great information you can get. So, you know, that's what we want these students to get, even if they decide not to, you know, come to BPU. Um, and in turn, you know, we want to get some value out of their contributions. We want to assign them to some meaningful work, uh, besides just the job shadow stuff. We want them, where, you know, meaningful projects that um, help BP you out. And then at the end of that is the possibility of, you know, a full-time position on graduation, which, which helps them with a job, helps us with staffing. So that's what we're trying to get to, hopefully. So what they're going to do, like I said, they're going to work with our engineers um, during the design phase and construction phase of projects, just see their everyday workflow, go out in the field with them. Um, you know, see what an engineer does, you know, when an engineer, you go to school, you do a lot of math and a lot of theory and you know, there's so many different things you can do, you don't get to see the real world application, so here's your chance to see the day to day. Um, we also assign them, you know, special projects that work on their, on their own. Um, you know, might be a research project or, or different task complete, we're assigning them and kind of have limited supervision, so they have their own tasks and they're contributing in their own way. Um, we also rotate between our transmission distribution side and then the substation side, trying to give exposure to um, both of those groups within electric operations because they're, they're pretty different in terms of the day-to-day work, so it kind of gets them um, you know, some different exposure to different areas and different things. As part of that, we do some introductory training for those departments when they start, you know, we give them kind of uh, you know, a transmission and distribution primer or substation overview, that kind of stuff. We also let them work with our system planning engineer, kind of see things from the overall plan perspective and how we look at the system overall. Um, also do a bunch of site visits, um, obviously go out to a bunch of distribution facilities, several substations. We also take them over to the Energy Control Center where Jaren's group works, um, controls all the system and the nearman power plant. Um, and on the next slide, this is just some things we've been kind of doing uh, recently to try and enhance the program. Uh, what I just mentioned, the site visits um, to those other facilities, that's new. Um, obviously, these interns are working for electric ops. Um, but you know, the idea is to get them out, let them see the control center, let them see the power plant. So maybe if, you know, uh, what we're doing like operations doesn't appeal to them, they kind of see everything, see the all, all the opportunities BPU has to offer. And you know, really hopefully just get them in here interested in something and wanting to come work for us. Um, in the past, we've been, I think, pretty passive about getting interns. A lot of it's been, you know, someone who may, you know, know somebody here or however, but we've been a lot more active the past couple of years. We've been going to um, the Engineering Career Fair at Kansas State, um, and recruiting for full-time positions and uh, interns. Um, uh, Philip and the water guys participated with it uh, last year as well. Um, so we're trying to be more active with that, really get more out of the program. Um, the next thing is, is uh, co-op opportunities. Um, if you're not familiar, you know, typically an intern, someone who comes in in between semesters, just over the summer. Uh, work for just three months in between classes. With a co-op, you're actually working while you're in school. So we, we've identified, some able to identify some kids who, you know, maybe have like a light semester on their last semester finishing up, and they only have like one or two classes. So we've been able to work at where they come and, you know, work three to four days at BPU while they're finishing their last semester. So they're already, you know, really working like a real engineer. And then are able to kind of come on board with a leg up, um, full-time after that's over. So looking at that, you know, just more exposure and and more development. So these guys are already, you know, further along as soon as they are an official full-time employee than, than most people. Uh, the last thing, um, so APPA has this D program. We can get some funding um, to help with, you know, paying for the intern salary. Um, there's some requirements around it, you know, they have to submit, submit some different reports on the type of projects they're working on and, and try to um, basically demonstrate the value and, and show some things that are utilities. Um, so we've only applied for that. We haven't, you know, been awarded it. I want to mention it's you know, small dollars. It's not like what Philip was talking about, but there's a few thousand dollars there to kind of help with the program, help, help pay these interns. Um, so this year, these are, these are two of our interns, uh, Ricky and Delaney, um, who, who were interned with us. We actually had three. Um, one of them is not shown because he was doing a co-op program, like I mentioned, he was finishing up his last semester and already been working with us. And we ended up, um, you know, offering him a job midway through summer and going ahead and bringing on him, him on full-time. Um, so, so this was a shot from, from kind of something we make them do at the um, end of the semester. Uh, we have them give a presentation to, you know, the engineering and operations staff, um, on what it was they did this summer, everything they, they worked on. And we also ask them for, you know, feedback, you know, what did you like? Um, what could we do better? You know, what's your suggestions for us? So um, pretty good, it's, you know, beneficial for us to get some feedback on the program. Um, you know, some of the people there weren't working very closely with them. So they get to kind of see what they've been doing, and then I think it's also good practice for them doing, you know, presentations and, and things of that nature. Um, so some of the things they did, um, we, we were pretty fortunate to, to, we had, well, three we had. Um, all of them really came in and did a great job. Um, at the time when we brought them on, um, we um, we, you know, we've been short-staffed a few engineers. We've been able to actually fill those positions this year, which is great. At the time, we were short a few engineers. We had a few engineers out on, um, you know, personal business, you know, one, one gentleman, his wife had a baby. So he was out with that. And so we were really short at the time when they came in. And, uh, Ricky and Delaney really helped out. We, um, the work order field verification. When our engineers send out a design, it goes to the crews. They completed, it comes back and then it gets checked and, and closed out. And we unfortunately had a pretty big backlog of those just from, from staffing. So they come in and, and jumped in, helped, uh, actually get to go out in the field, look at jobs, review them. And actually get us caught up on that while getting some good experience. Um, the other thing was, um, we call it distributed generation application, but if you wanna put in a solar panel or a wind turbine or, or whatever you want, any kind of behind the meter generation, you have to apply for that, you know, our engineers review it and then approve it. Um, and so we actually looped the interns in on that process, which took some load off our engineers. Um, and the feedback we got, um, you know, from the interns, because they were actually able to interact with the customer and go through the application, all of our engineers, one of our engineers is supervising and they were copied on the email chain, but they got to actually interact with customer and work through and, and they said they really thought that was great and made them feel like, you know, they were really contributing and, and, and they were. Um, so, so that went really well. Um, they helped us out with, um, a, a compliance responsibility we have to, um, go through and catalog and document, um, every piece of equipment we have on our substations and, and transmission lines and have a lot of documentation and, and do verification on that. And so they, it's a very, you know, time-consuming, labor-intensive process and, and they really helped out with that. So we got a lot of really good work out of, uh, these engineers. Another one, um, just capacitor bank controller. That's a project we were working on for, for several years, actually. Um, we had one intern who spent a summer looking at, well, not all summer, but he spent part of the summer looking at, um, different controllers. We, what we were using was outdated. We had to identify a new one. So he researched everything that was out there. He worked with manufacturers and then, you know, kind of like I showed you earlier, he did a presentation to everybody, um, at the end on what he found and what's some of the pros and cons and prices and uh, we ended up going with his recommendation after reviewing it. And, um, you know, we had another intern come in, uh, the next year and actually buy the, you know, uh, controller and, and do a test case with it, talk them back to SCADA and making some improvements. So that's something we've been you know, kind of working on with our interns over time and will continue to do so. Also got to participate in the substation project to, uh, change out some line relays, kind of see some stuff out in the field besides the other day-to-day stuff. Um, and then there's a couple of opportunities, um, you know, we, we sometimes have some really unique opportunities for these kids and, um, you know, there was one time there when they were with the substation group, we actually had a, a substation fault when they were kind of in the middle of a tour. And so I got to see our guys go in, you know, look at it, analyze the problem, troubleshoot it and switch everything back around and kind of see how that whole process works, uh, which is a pretty, you know, rare experience. Um, they're also here. We had all those, you know, really bad storms in July. They got to go out in the field after that, um, you know, help, help with the cleanup and all the ticket problem. There's a ton of, you know, paperwork and tickets that had to be addressed. And so those two things right there are, you know, some really unique experiences that you, you don't often get that they were fortunate to, you know, they're, are really educational. We've had some similar stuff in the past. We've had interns when we, when we built the Rosedale sub who, you know, worked with the field guys, the substation guys. All summer doing testing and commissioning and just, just really unique stuff you can't get, uh, anywhere else. Um, and my last slide here, I didn't bring my whole staff with me. I should have. I didn't know we were doing that, but we've, we've actually hired, uh, four engineers, um, through the internship program, you know, one gentleman uh, interned with us in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, then came on full-time in twenty seventeen as distribution engineer. Second gentleman, he interned in twenty fifteen, um, he actually went and, and worked, uh, somewhere else and then actually came back and we hired him last year as a distribution engineer in twenty twenty-two. Um, and then, um, another gentleman interned with us. He did an internship in twenty twenty and then a co-op through his last semester in twenty twenty-two. And we hired him on at the end of that, once he officially graduated. And then our last guy I mentioned, you know, he, he was working on a co-op in twenty twenty-three and as soon as he graduated, we made him a full-time offer. So um, you know, actually gotten, you know, four full-time engineers, um, out of this program, which is really good. Like I said, I think we have a pretty unique experience here that, you know, really appeals to people, appeals to me. Obviously that's why I'm here. Um, and I think if, you know, doing this program and, and advertise the kids, let them see what we do, you know, helps them, you know, helps them see that and wanna come work here. So that was all I had. If there are any questions about the program or kind of what we do, anything like that.
So the two that we saw in the picture, they were this past summer?
Yes.
Is there co-op opportunities for those?
Yeah, you know, I said it's, it's kind of one of those things, most people, um, you know, when we looked at in the past, we're always open to it, but you know, most people wanna go back to school and finish it. It's really just, we found a couple of kids who are, they're finishing up their last semester and they've just got one or two classes. And so we can manage to work that without putting a lot of strain on them.
That we have people lined up for someone?
Um, we, we will go back to Kansas State, um, uh, n- next year to keep recruiting, but I, you know, as long as it holds, I do know at least one of those interns wanted to come back, uh, next summer. We'd love to have him back. So yeah, so we're yeah, he was, he was also a Southern Academy graduate. Matter of fact, Ricky. Yes. The three, three of the four that were shown hired on the, on the last page are, uh, KCK natives. Yep. All right.
So Darren was, uh, I guess very modest in his earlier comments, uh. You know, this has been somewhat of a, of a struggle for BPU to compete in this arena with the other engineering firms and we really didn't have a program to speak of. So a lot of our employees kind of took it upon themselves to go out and say, we're gonna go out and spend our time recruiting, going to the colleges, going to career fairs and doing things like that. Um, and that was a little bit of frustration with part of what we had in HR before. And, uh, so we've come a long ways. We are, we're actually putting the stamp on a formalized in- internship program that to be able to talk about what we're doing, how we're doing it and why we're doing it, and also building the marketing pieces around that as well. So, so, uh, hopefully that'll be something that we'll complete in the next week or two. So I, I think we're almost there. Would you gotta put the final stamp on it? The other thing that I'll mention that Darren didn't talk about is we're also working on a scholarship program for, uh, high school students, specifically to, to One Night County High School students. And, uh, we're gonna be bringing that back to the board, talking more about it. The plan is to uh, get some level of scholarship, but we're not, certainly not gonna pay for somebody's four, four years of college, but we'll provide some assistance. I was, I'm gonna be looking at other sponsorships, transferring some dollars around to try to help some of our kids, build up our intern, build up some of our technical positions, put us in a better position to be able to compete in those arenas and get local kids coming back. Like you've heard, you've got people graduating from, from One Night County High Schools, going away to college and they're coming back and they're interested. We need to do all we can to attract our brightest kids and the, and the best talent back into One Night County. So the scholarship program would be administered by a third party that is, that specializes and does that is, it's, uh, we're looking at the Greater Kansas City Foundation community, but that, which, which is which does scholarship programs for majority of, of the large companies across the Greater Kansas City area. I mean, this is what they do and, uh, and there's nobody close to them. So but I'll be bringing more details back around that. And, and my hope is the board will also be receptive and see that as a positive step going forward with us working with the, some of the, so many kids uh, in our community to go into some of these professional engineers, technical jobs. Think there's gonna be a piece we're gonna carve out to help for some recruit and help train some lineman pre-apprentice, you know, positions and stuff like that too. So and with the junior college coming next door, that'd also be a, uh, a good opportunity to get uh, kids that may not have the financial means to at least go to a junior college or a technical school and get them some level of, of assistance as well. So I'll be bringing that back to you. Thank you, Darren. So I've got a, uh, I've got a list that, you know, I said I would not speak at the work session. I do have a, a list of things I do wanna speak to here. That David said earlier, uh, on Monday, him and I did meet with, uh, Representative Davids at the mayor's office. That was a last minute call for me. It was, it was, uh, I think driving into work, hey, can you be over here in, uh, in, in a, in a couple of hours to, uh, meet with, uh, Representative Davids, uh. So it was, it was mostly about UG priorities and what they wanna do, some funding and stuff, but but we did have an opportunity to talk about BPU too. And, uh, and I will be meeting with staff, uh, next week. I, I did talk today, but I haven't talked to Jeremy. I know Jeremy was kind of in and out today. So look for an invite, cause we need to really prioritize what our request is gonna be. Uh, and that's what she asked for to get it to her early so she can work on it. So so, uh, we'll get together after the board meeting and, and talk, and match up our calendars and talk about electric and water funding, cause I wanna make sure that we're doing something on both sides of the utility. And, uh, one thing that was mentioned by Philip earlier is, uh, he is spot-on with some of the comments around the Justice Forty community. So you know, and I had this conversation with, uh, some of, when I met with her and Evergy and, uh, some of the other people she had pulled together. The common theme there was there's no community in the state of Kansas that's better suited for any Justice Forty's type funding than One Night County. Because we are the most diverse. We all, we do meet all of the, the, we do hit all the, the check boxes, uh, when it comes to that level and type of funding. So you know, we're not gonna get everything we ask for, but we need to be razor sharp on what our ask deals. And then we also need to make sure that these are the most beneficial things that we can try to go after for our community's benefit. So I'll be bringing some of that back, back as well. Uh, just the other day, we had a key account luncheon, uh. So Randy talked about, you know, in our revenue forecast, uh, kinda what type revenues coming in uh, from all of our different, or, or at least our three major customer classes, residential, commercial and industrial. You know, it's important for us to continue as we talk about the residential, as we talk about the, uh, commercial customers, but, but never lose sight on our residential, on our industrial customers. It's, they make up. There's not as many of them, but they make up such a huge amount of our revenue in terms of electric and water dollars that come into this community. Okay? And we do this on an annual basis and, uh, and it's our way of having a direct communication with those industry customers. We answer questions. We, you know, we normally provide PowerPoint, uh, just a general update of where, where the utility is. I went back through the, uh, conversation on, on our rate case, asking the questions why. We talked about our green rider and, uh, the availability of that. But it's important for us to continue to, uh, to, uh, continue that dialogue and continue to have those type of uh, conversations and that type of support with those large consumers of electric and water services. Because just the one gender motor plant by itself, not counting the rest of Fairfax that are worth, the rest of Armadale or the rest of the, uh, Kansas Avenue corridor, just GM by itself on the electric side is probably, I haven't done the math, I'd say fourteen, fifteen thousand residential homes. So that's, you know, and then when you start looking at all the other factories that you're talking about, uh, for utility at our size that have that type of industrial load. It's, uh, you don't see medicinal utilities our size that have that type of customer makeup in this country. You know, you see, certainly you see the larger ones, but, but not us. So again, it's important for us to continue that, uh, roles, I'll leave the community. Engagement committed to you, if, you know, I'm not I don't talk about that. Last thing I'll talk about is I did, you know, I have a meeting with the mayor. I have a meeting with the county administrator. You know, in addition, outside the meeting, I just spoke about with our Representative Davids and we're talking about a series of things that we need to work on together from a, from an executive's, uh, position. You know, we, we've always talked about the, uh, lower level, mid-level staff people at BPU and the unified government working close together, electric and water, customer service and, uh, the UG staff do seem to work better. We've had some, some, uh, tough things we had to work through at the executive level over, over the last few years. So uh, I have uh, had some conversations with the current mayor, but, and, and also with the county administrator. And the county administrator has, uh, has been more, uh, more open to having, uh, a conversation on how we can work better together, uh, between him and I and, uh, and others on the executive staff. So we're gonna, we're gonna sit down and work on some, some joint agreements, uh, uh, and, uh, what an idea to ask for is some of this to go in writing, uh, so that, uh, it'll be there for future generations and, and he's agreed to that. So it's a little bit different feeling right now, knowing that, uh, that relationship is playing out the way it is. And, uh, and I'm, I'm certainly happy to, to say, I think we are at least having him on board, we're moving in a, in a little bit different direction. So and part of that conversation has been uh, making sure that BPU is at the table doing economic development. Okay? And then we're gonna write some procedures and, and put that in place, uh, so that, uh, not only BPU management knows what their roles are, but the unified government employees also know what their roles are and then how we're gonna conduct our economic development processes and move forward together, you know, because we just had a meeting the other day with, uh, with the large development out West. So name is, name is name, but there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of that was mainly due to BPU being brought in late and us having to try to work through all of those things, uh, at the last minute. So so I, I do see that moving forward better. Uh, the last thing that I was able to get agreement on too is separating the bills. So we will be working on, on that. Uh, he, county administrators in full agreement. The mayor is in full agreement. So uh, we gotta work through the details. Uh, I need to work back with staff on seeing how, uh, how much on or decoupling of our s- system, of our processes that is gonna still be needed. But I did get assurances today that we're all moving forward, uh, now on, on bun, on bun, separating the bills and, uh, and then, uh, I don't know that it'll happen quicker than the end of the first quarter, cause I, I need to, we need to sit down and just wa- work through all of that. So but, uh, but I'll be giving you more details later. So thank you for, uh, making this a high-level topic. Uh, I've certainly been in, thank you, Dave. I've certainly had a lot of conversations and been doing a lot of work in the county administrator's office and the mayor's office and, and trying to make sure that this happens. And, uh, and, uh, two months ago, he said, give him two months, let him work back and come up with a process. And when we met today, uh, we agreed on a process I think will be good for not just BPU, but for the city too. And more importantly, it'll be easier and more flexible for the people in our community. So I wanted to report that today and, uh, it's all I have unless you have any questions. I mean.
Question.
Go ahead, David.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, uh, really for, uh, with that insight that you bring as always, uh, Bill Johnson, we appreciate that. Um, I was privileged to attend the commercial, uh, and industrial lunch. And I was just wondering how those that were in attendance were, um, brought or invited. Do we rotate the very, cause certainly not all of our commercial and industrial, um, 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 customers were, were here. But is there, how is that that done on an annual basis by way of invitation?
Yeah, I think it's sent out to the top thirty, thirty-five, uh, lower amount. Top thirty, right, top thirty. And, uh, and that's all based on their, on their usage, so electric and water usage. And, uh, uh, I mean, certainly don't have a room. I mean, they wasn't all here, but, but we did have a full room of, of turnout. So, uh, and again, you know, what, we're gonna be also talking about our focus group, uh, meetings and how we go about doing that. We may not have a a location to actually have people come in like we did in the past. So I'm still working with David on exactly how we roll that out. And then it may be more survey for him. I, I don't know. I mean, but he's working on all, all the logistics and try to get that out and get that done before the end of the year.
Right. And brief follow-up, um, you know, with the, um, shutdown at GM, it being one of our larger, you know, industrial, um, I didn't know if there's been some kind of run or rerun for the brief time that, that Um I didn't know if there's been some kind of run or rerun for the brief time that, that hopefully that they'll be shut down, that will affect. The revenues or our bottom line, or if we looked at that, what it means with it inoperable right now.
Laurie.
Probably that time period has not been billed yet. Um yeah, we are anticipating to see a drop in revenue for them. Um I don't estimate how much, but since they weren't running. For probably two months, I believe.
Think about our billing cycles.
Yeah, yeah, so that was probably September, October. So uh. Probably. The November bill will be kind of September usage. Or October, they're billed at the end of the month, so. Probably within the next couple of months, we'll see the impact of that.
I, I'd certainly want to see how that comes into play when it's available, I appreciate it, thank you, ma'am, sir.
David, back to you for board comments.
Oh, okay, well. Uh, thank you, uh Madam President, um. I didn't say much last time, so I saved it all up for this time, um but um I will try to make this concise and brief. Um wanna, I'll probably want to recapitulate this at our next meeting in writing. And um want to say that I, I've learned a lot being here, and I think this is a great utility. I've joined it now almost a year and a half, and I wanted to be consistent uh and, and for what I feel. We need to do here about procedures that have made sense and advocacy that I've had. And uh about some of the transparencies that are here. Um I appreciate during my time here, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Johnson's staff. That we now um do have the interaction with the transparency, that we're now on AV, we're now live. Remember, there was some concern about whether or not um, there would be over participation by the public, and I said, I don't think it'll materialize, and indeed it hasn't. But at least it's archived, I'm appreciative of that um. I tell you, I almost get emotional when I hear the other advocacy, because everybody asked me and told me it wasn't gonna happen about dividing out. And seeing what's moving on the, the um, taking out the onerous uh taxes that the UG puts. On the bill that gives BPU a bad name as the tax collector, and um when I first brought that up, everyone, you know, uh, they said it'll never happen, and. The advocacy that Bill and um others have brought to it, I think is gonna make a tremendous difference in how this utility is perceived when it finally happens. Uh greater consumer participation, the Community Engagement Board, which I know, Madam President, you'll probably speak to, and so I'll leave that alone, but seeing that meet. And being here the other day, I'll let you speak too, but I'm excited about that, and right now, as cold as it is during the time and tenure we have here. Uh the cold weather rule that your advocacy has brought will probably um keep some people being disconnected who otherwise would be, hope to have those numbers soon, glad to see that. And also now to see the RFPs in action for the dormant properties um like the call. And the Quandero plants, revenue laying on the table for years that hopefully we will have some response to, to keep. Um those who can utilize something we're not using to bring it in. So finally, let me say um, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm kind of happy about the policies and where we've moved, I still. Want to point out, and again, I want to submit in writing next time, my board comment, to say that. Um I think that as we look ahead, we need to look at the compensation that this board has, the six of us here, and by the way. I feel that there might be a consideration to have four in district instead of three in district. You look at the map, you look at the population, we might be better served to have four in district and keep the three at-large positions. And that there would be a more adequate compensation, it's been twenty years, twenty years. Since this board, which is supposedly really making some contribution uh to the policies here, has been um adjusted. Um and Kansas Legislature has a task force that has come back. And said that they should do it if we want to remove the onus of a board voting on that, perhaps that can and should be done. Um and uh, oh, let me see, one more thing, this is a plea. This really is, I admire this utility, I'm supportive, I didn't support, as you know, the rate increases or the pay increases. But I will not be a part of trying to repeal um staff um increases or rate increases. Um but I will want to push for customer service, greater customer service, I hope we can consider, as we heard, the in-person. Desire to have a lobby interaction, um to have, you know, our constituency better served, I'll continue to push for that. And finally, I will continue to ask us to consider, since we don't make anything sitting on this board really. That we at least have the discretion to resolve some of the issues that we get, I get calls all the time. This week, or last, was today, Wednesday, the last week and part of this week. It was over a lady whose service was cut off for four dollars because she missed her pay plan, she missed her pay plan, cut off for four dollars. Instead of me being able to have, as each of us should, because we're the first line in many ways, not the staff. Because they don't, they can't go to the lobby, they can't get through to customer service, they can't get through to Mr. Johnson, we have to call, so here, I end up. Not being able to say, because we have that fund for four dollars and a three hundred dollar um uh connection fee or, or um. Um um deposit, a longtime customer, her lights are off for days on end. We ought to be able to resolve that directly, not have to go through somebody making hundreds of dollars an hour to resolve this issue, gotta call them up and wait to hear. You know, I do respect, but you know, having them come off their job to resolve something that we can resolve or should be able to resolve like that. Just doesn't make sense, it's inefficient, it's bureaucratic. And um it's certainly something that I hope this board will consider to put in place. Um a fund that we can directly access, so we can get these people turned back on and work that resolution out without undue burden. And expense on our um well-compensated staff. So anyway, this is a plea, and we're a great utility, we really are. I respect the Board of Public Utilities, and I say that everywhere I go, I want us to be better, and I will codify these remarks. It will probably be briefer in writing than they have been uh orally tonight, but um. I just uh appreciate having the opportunity uh to, to share that tonight, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Groneman.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank uh the people that uh came up and gave uh the reports this evening. It was very enlightening to hear that uh we are bringing, in our graduate, high school graduates who've gone off to college, back and back into the BPU, that. That was, that information was just, was very, very enlightening, and I liked, I also enjoyed uh all those comments that uh. It sounds like the UG's finally willing to uh at least consider, you know, uh. Making changes to the bills, which is something they hadn't been willing to do in, in the, in the past, so uh, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Bill, for your work and staff, that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say? Bob, if you had some comments tonight, we're gonna need you to hit star six again.
Stress test today, so I came out with hopefully flying color, so I'll see you at next board meeting, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Jeff?
Uh, thank you guys for the presentations tonight, there was some positive news in that, I like hearing that uh. You know, uh the area that you were talking about uh during the water main replacements uh like Highland and Turner and Rosedale, all, a lot of that is in my district. And I know it's old because um. I'm reporting it to you guys a lot, you know, whenever there's leaks and stuff, but. Uh it's nice to hear that, you know, we've got the money. To put back into this project and, and uh see some. Maintenance return back on, onto our uh older system, so thank you all very much for that, and uh, that's all I got.
Mary?
I just, I hope Mr. Myland was um listening when uh they were mentioning. All of you people coming from Sumner Academy, because that's his alma mater, and he never stops talking about how great Sumner Academy is, and um. I, I would have to echo that as well, having sent two of my children there um. I'd like to um thank Phillip for the presentation, and Darren, I'm really happy, Darren, that you're starting that program um to. You know, pull our young people in and, and um try to let them early see. Uh what they could do at a smaller utility that they might not be able to do at a Evergy or someplace like that, so I really appreciate that. And um I also attended the breakfast this week for the um. The cus- industrial customers, and one thing I noticed was a larger group of uh schools. Here than we normally have, people from Bonner, and then of course the KCK district, so I was kind of happy to see that as well. And um, gonna let Rose talk about our ambassadors in that meeting, and so that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh Phillip, thank you very much for your presentation tonight, uh Darren, thank you for that as well. Um that's, that's um. That's really good news that we're able to put some of that grant money to, to good use. I hope that this utility can go out and find you a whole bunch more, because I'd love to see you get that fifty-one million dollars you need, friend. Uh Aaron, welcome aboard. Um Brandon, Chris, thank you guys for, pleasure to see you guys in the boardroom tonight. Um. Darren, that, that um, that program that you guys have going, I know it, it, you know, you had some help with it, but uh, you know, what a, what a great testament to putting an internship program like that together. You know, getting some KCK kids, you know, that have graduated from, from Sumner and KCK schools and. You know, going down and plucking them out of K-State's, you know, fantastic engineering program, that's um, that's, that's great, and. It's, hopefully that, that program goes on for years to come, so thank you for that. Um. So on Monday night, we had the kickoff meeting for the Community Engagement Committee at long last, this has been a year in the making. With uh at the urging of this community uh in, in partnership with this board. Um fellow committee members, uh Jeff Bryant and Mary Gonzalez. And I met with uh the community ambassadors that have chosen uh to volunteer to be ambassadors for the community back to this utility. And um while we did have some substantive discussion, although it wasn't really intended, um you know, I was really kind of energized by. You know, the folks who have chosen to be ambassador or were chosen to be ambassadors, um what they bring to the table, what they're gonna bring on behalf of the community. And um hopefully, you know, we're gonna have a really collaborative process to, to, you know, move some things forward. Um, you know, the, some repeated things that we hear in the community, so I'm really excited about that as well. And would like to thank uh Patrice um Townsend for all of her help uh coordinating that as well. Um. I, I only have two other things, uh one, I want to remind every board member um to make sure that they've completed. At least three hours of continuing education by the end of the year in the municipal energy or water sector. Um I know that there's some online webinars, APPA, AWA puts all of that stuff out, so if you haven't done that yet, please do so. Um and the last thing I would want to remind the board is that uh for the eleven fifteen meeting, I will be fully remote that entire evening, so that's all I have, thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please. Roll call, Myland.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, good meeting.